Okay, well, I'm not sure you're watching us, but we're all ready to go.
Give him a wave.
What's that? For being filmed, uh, what?
You are.
Anyway, okay.
Just wait.
Let's get started then. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Dyson Planning Board Meeting for Wednesday, July seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. As a reminder, this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcasts and for future broadcasts on YouTube. If you all wouldn't mind standing, we pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. August twenty first, is that a Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, that's a scheduled or anticipated next meeting date. Are we on, I guess we can discuss it, consider it to be all business as far as our September schedule. Uh, September fourth is, uh, was it Labor Day?
Labor Day week.
Labor Day week, okay. And September fourth being the first Wednesday. Just curious what the feeling of the board is about taking that week off since a lot of vacation is still going on that week, and we did have an extra meeting day, if you recall, in June, that we weren't supposed to have. I don't know the board's feeling, but my recommendation, um, my opinion is we should take that week off.
What, what, what these are?
September fourth.
September fourth. I'm making a motion that we take the September fourth meeting off.
I'll second. Thank you.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to take, well, I guess to extend our summer schedule through September fourth, twenty nineteen, that being a night off. So the next meeting would be what, eighteenth?
Yeah, September fifteenth.
All right. So the first meeting in September would be September eighteenth. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Going on under, I guess it's old business, just plain old business, Wellington Street Residential Subdivision. We put it on week after week and there's never, doesn't seem to be any additional progress being made. I'm not sure where they at. Carrie, did they get back to you today?
The only thing that got back to me was the request for the continuance that I just put inside your folder for the meeting.
Eight twenty one?
For the next time, so a date until.
Richard.
Yeah.
Oh, this was just today, they faxed this to you?
I'm sorry. There. It was the last minute. Email received.
Any thoughts on this extension? We, um.
How many times has this applicant been?
We seem to, I, I think we should and I, um, probably until such time we get a definitive time, that they may or may not be ready, whether it's three months from now, six months from now, instead of putting it on and time after time and, and then the butter comes down or two of butters each time and we, we never get to hear it, so. Could we reach out to Bob Berby, I guess would be the person, to try to get a definitive date on the... But for this one, I guess we should extend it to the twenty first, August twenty first, since we just got it today. There is a, and this is just a thought, going forward, if they're not ready by then, I suppose we could deny it and let them reapply. That's happened before.
That sounds like a plan.
And.
I'll check the procedures for denial, make sure that you.
Can we give them a time limit? Either come forward by a certain time or you're gonna have to reapply. Because they're wasting our time.
I'll check with you.
They're wasting the residents' time.
I know.
Why don't we just extend them until our September meeting? That way, I mean, that gives them two months to get something.
Put in the same token, too. I've been, um, told that their flag of their wetlands was delineated ten years ago and there's been nothing done again up there.
Needs to be done also.
Yeah.
So.
You know, I mean, instead of putting in our meeting after meeting and, and if they reapply, we could, it'd be up to the board, we could waive the fee. I don't know what the feeling is, since they've already paid it once. You know, we're just wasting everybody's time now and spinning our wheels, so.
We've already waived the fee this time around, right?
Second, second, uh, reapplication.
Oh, that's right. We did waive this fee before.
Yeah.
The last one, I think, was seven years ago. So how long has this extension been going on for right now? Is the question?
Maybe he's right. He's, oh, yes.
It's been going on for ten years. I live right next door.
Yeah, it has been.
I mean, there are no wetland flags even left that long.
Maybe, what do you think about sending them a letter saying, we're gonna let you extend till our September meeting. If not ready by then, we're gonna deny it.
That sounds good.
How's that work? Is that legal?
You have to check the bylaws for us, I would suggest.
Yeah, you gotta check, check with your attorney on that one. You just.
You say it's legal?
I would say it's an illegal issue.
Well, we can extend them until September, right? And then.
You can start extending them in two-month increments. Yeah?
I believe the time will be, you have a hundred eighty days.
Oh, the six on to October.
I think it's had close to a hundred eighty days.
What are we, in July, December, August, September, October?
If they grant the continuance, then that will still carry it on.
I would have no issue with that, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, you would?
First, first meeting in October?
First meeting in Oc-, you wanna continue it to then?
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's, um, see if we can reach out to legal counsel to see what, um, we can do on our end.
To October, the first meeting in October?
Yeah, that way they're, our butter can. Our butter can stay home.
Lucky.
You have my, I believe you have my comments.
Yeah.
When is the, um?
That's October second.
Second, okay, okay.
Is there a motion to extend the request to October second?
I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we extend the request of, um. Excuse me. Uh, Kenneth Arujo, zero Wellington Street, map eleven lots seven eight and eight dash zero one, until October second of twenty nineteen.
Second motion. Motion made and seconded, no further discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that carries, it's extended to October second. I don't see them completing it before then, by then either, but, um.
But I don't think it's an idea if they're gonna ask for continuance, is there not gonna be like two-week continuance?
Yeah. I'm trying to really do it. Okay, next order of business, four B. We discuss an Act One year extension request for two seven three four Elm Street Solar, map twenty one, lot four. There should be a request via email in your folder. We've given this company an extension already too, no?
I believe we have.
Well, that had a lot of extenuating, because basically the company that was building it went out of business and everything, and they had to take it over and say, they, from what we saw when they were in there, they were really trying to do the right, do a good job and.
Do the right, do the right thing?
Yeah.
Okay, what's your pleasure on the request to extend for?
Make a motion to request a one-year extension.
Second.
Did you mean to grant a one-year one?
Grant. Okay, motion made in the second to extend this project, mention it, for one year. Until what date is that?
It would be twenties, twenties, so that would be July seventeen of twenty twenty.
Okay.
Would it not be from?
It would be.
Those are from the date they sent it?
Well, no, a date when their permit expires, I would assume.
Right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We have that date available?
I don't have that readily on me right now, but I can, um, confirm.
You can state it in the motion.
Yeah, okay, let's, uh, let's follow.
From the inspiration of the, um.
Everybody vote, yeah?
Confirm, confirm.
No, we're voting, no, we haven't, you're still in the discussion phase.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we entertain and take a recess for ten minutes till the applicant, One Connection Corp., comes and is present for a public hearing at six thirty.
Motion's made to recess for ten minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll be back at six twenty-five.
I was voting last Wednesday.
Thirty, we'll have to wait five minutes, but we can do a, uh, do number five. Approve meeting minutes of June nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of June nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the meeting minutes of June nineteen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Any public input? I have some public input. Just real quick, um, I received an email from Mallory asking me how the, uh, Route forty-four, business district was moving along. So, um, be prepared probably either next meeting or the meeting after to start discussing our options up on Route forty-four, whether to extend the business district, whether to put any type of overlays on it. She wants to see a marijuana overlay on top of it, which is close to theirs. I don't know how that's gonna work out, but, uh, you're in town for it, so I wouldn't be too concerned, you know? But, uh.
Is she looking to have something to put on the, uh, warrant for the special time meeting? Is that what she's looking at?
I, yeah, um.
Will we have enough time to have a public hearing?
What's the timeframe?
Well, that's the thing, I don't know when the meeting will be.
That's something I don't wanna rush into personally.
Yeah.
Because the last time we did, um, that overlay district in the mixed use.
Yeah.
You know, we, we rushed into that, and we already ran into a problem with the used car lot.
Yeah.
Right? And I, I spoke with some other cities and towns that have mixed use in, in their bylaws, it says no used car lots. So we gotta, we gotta do a little more thinking before we take action. That's what I'm thinking, so maybe we can just have a little time to discuss the area, go over the maps, look at the existing businesses that are there, and decide what's best for that area.
I know, I know there's fifty-some homes.
Right.
From town line to town line, and that's only if we go out of a couple hundred feet.
You know, mixed, mixed use opens up for everything and anything unless we have some parameters. And, uh, you saw what we ran into on William Street with that.
Yeah. I would agree, we consent our, our discussions and.
And let's just not discuss too much and miss out on what's coming, you know, that's the, the thing.
That's true, too.
Keep an open mind.
They're not knocking the door down, Joe.
You never know, if they start, then I think.
But if we post meetings, we can post it as a working session, so it gives us the ability to deliberate between each other. So if you post a meeting, it's not listed as a working session, you cannot deliberate between parts in that meeting, so.
Sounds good.
Working session would be our best bet to go, I think.
I think so, too.
Makes sense.
All right, we'll set one up. How about September fourth? Oh, Joe, you weren't here, but we're taking off September fourth.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Oh, I thought you'd wanna come. All right, so we've got like another minute.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that our, you know, our teeth are crossed and our eyes are dotted, that way when we do go for a presentation or town meeting, that we have all the information available for the residents. We don't wanna run into another situation that's, you know, just transplanted to our last time meeting, so. It's best to be prepared all the way around, you know?
It's too soon.
So do we want to sign?
I'll tell her we're thinking about it.
So do you want me to put it as a discussion on the agenda for the next meeting, or do you want me to hang, hold off?
I don't know.
You don't have to act, you can just start a discussion.
The working session.
What we need to find out is how wide is that business district presently along Route forty-four? And remember the day we looked at all that and measured, we think it's only a hundred feet?
Yeah.
Can we try to verify the depth of that?
Well, we have a map digitally.
Yeah.
Just email Matt. She can email Matt, and he has the map electronic, he can verify.
Yeah, because when you look at it and measure it, according to measurement, it's only a hundred feet.
Well, could be what it is.
It could be. I don't know whether it was done, was that done before you were on the board? You don't remember?
No. I believe we did that.
Yeah, that only, I, I was, I think I remember a town meeting, I wasn't on the board at the time. I think you're right that it only extended a hundred feet past the liquor store.
Yeah. I mean, I'm talking about the depth from the center line.
Depth of center line.
All right.
Useless for a business, a hundred feet of depth is, is just.
That's, there's already people violating that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And what's the sense of doing something like that if it doesn't even help any business?
Once we find out what the depth is, we, we can go from there. Okay, moving on to number four. See. Public hearing, six eighty PM, One Connection Corp. to one at William Street, map two, lot one twenty-seven. Uh, Mr. Reins, would you mind, would, would you not mind writing, reading the, uh?
It's a legal notice.
Legal notice, yes.
Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing, Town Hall slash Board of Selectance Meeting Room, July seventeenth, twenty nineteen, at six thirty PM. Notice is hereby given, the planning, I'm sorry, notice is hereby given, the Dyson Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on a special permit application or applications and site plan review by One Connection Corp. For a vertically integrated registered marijuana dispensary and adult-use marijuana establishment including cultivation, product manufacturing, and retail dispensing at two hundred William Street, being shown as assessors map two lot one twenty-seven pursuant to the Mass General Lodge, Chapter forty A, Section nine, and Sections twenty-nine hundred and fifty-three hundred of the Town of Dyson zoning bylaws. Copies of the application or applications and plans are available for inspection in the Planning Board Office, nine seven nine Somerset Avenue, Dyson, Mass., during normal business hours. Dyson Planning Board, Thomas Pies, Chairman, Timothy Reins, Vice Chairman, Robert, Florence Clerk, Robert Woods, Member, Joseph Figurito, Member. This has been CC'd via email to the Board of Assessors, Building Inspector, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, Lisa Elmead, Esquire, Police Department, Sewer Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Water Department.
Thank you. We gonna do a presentation, do you wanna?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Um, my name is Philip Silverman, I'm an attorney for One Connection. Just sort of introduce everybody. By way of, you know, my introduction, I work for a law firm called Vicente Cedarburg. We're a national law firm that specializes in cannabis. All we do is, um, the marijuana. We have headquarters in Colorado, but a growing office in Boston and represent above a hundred clients in Massachusetts right now doing this all over the place, so. You know, we're, we're very excited about the project. You know, we, we're kind of selective in who we choose to work with, but we think this is sort of a, a good project. This is not one of the large projects in Massachusetts. Some of these places are well over a hundred thousand square feet. This is relatively small and limited, which I think, you know, for the property and such is, is appropriate. So, um, as you're aware, we're talking about the property at two hundred William Street. We're here for site plan review and for special permits for both a medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana cultivation, product manufacturing, and dispensing. We'd be cultivating the product, we'd also be, um, extracting the product, the oils from the product to create various types of, of, uh, products for sale, edibles, topical creams, oils, all sorts of vaporizer cartridges and such, there's a, there's a number of different products these days. And then we would also be dispensing it both for medical patients and for adult-use customers at this location. The property is in the appropriate marijuana overlay district here, and it's not within a thousand feet of those prohibited uses schools, um, childcare facility, drug rehabilitation facility, or correctional facility, or another registered marijuana dispensary. So it does work within your zoning. The company, um, has already obtained a provisional license on April eleventh, two thousand nineteen from the Cannabis Control Commission. So, you know, they're sort of well on their way, uh, in the licensing process with the state. It's expected, uh, that we would have about ten to twenty employees at this facility, probably start on the lower end of that at the beginning. Sort of a phased approach to construction that we'll get into a little bit here. I heard us talking about the hours. For now, you know, we'd be talking about potentially eight AM to nine PM, but I suspect that that will be more constricted as we learn more about what sort of the customer habits are here and when they're showing up. So it, it may not be, be taking advantage of. I, I think, I think you're allowed to go from eight, eight to nine PM. I suspect, though, in the end, it will probably be open a little bit later and maybe closed a little bit earlier than that as we sort of learn about customers. Introduce, introduce our, our team here. Just to my left here is Rob Caruso, he is the CEO of the company. John Connell is the civil engineer for the project. John Delson, uh, will be overseeing construction and sort of management of the facility. John's actually one of the most experienced people in Massachusetts. He's, uh, worked extensively at one of the more successful, uh, marijuana companies in Massachusetts. So, um, it, it's a good team, and I just wanted to let, uh, Rob sort of introduce himself, just tell you a little bit about himself as well.
Thanks, Phil. Thank you, Board, for having me tonight. My name is Rob Caruso, and I am CEO, CEO and founder of One Connection. I've been a Comcast employee for about nineteen years now. I am currently a security technician that primarily installs and troubleshoots home security systems. I, about seven years ago, I was diagnosed with some self-heal, health issues. I was prescribed a series of medications that just did not work. In two thousand and thirteen, I received my medical marijuana card and started my own treatments. I quickly identified that cannabis was having a positive impact on my health. The problem was cannabis was not easily accessible. That's when I decided to grow my own medication. The first six months, I failed and failed miserly, but I didn't give up. I realized that growing cannabis is not very easy and took a lot of time and attention. That's where my troubleshooting skills came in handy. So I started to look at all the variables. I found the pH of my water was way off, the airflow in my room was weak, the lights in my room, my room were not strong enough. The environment was just not perfect. As I started to correct some of these issues, the quality of my cannabis was getting much, much better. Over the next two years, I perfected my environment. I was then able to grow high-quality cannabis that was extremely effective for my health issues. Over the last couple of years, I was able to help a few medical marijuana patients as a caregiver by supplying them some high-quality cannabis. I knew I could help others and recognize the business opportunity. So in two thousand and seventeen, I formed One Connection with the intent to open a medical marijuana facility. That leads me here tonight at the special permit hearing and looking forward to the next stages. Thank you all for your attention and time for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, I'm, I'm gonna have John Connell get up and sort of give you the existing conditions and the project overview.
Do you mind if we, um, clear our question as you go?
Absolutely. Have a question. Uh, my name's John Connell, I work at Site Tech Endowment, Site Tech Engineering. Who I, I brought to prepare the plans for the project. Uh, everyone, I think, uh, it's, um, a pretty popular project. And a lot of people know exactly where the site is, it's two hundred Williams. It's currently existing, um, the different uses inside, uh, I think there's a cotton tree or something like that in there, no? But this is the existing in, in orange, the existing floor plan of the building. The, quite a bit of the project exists now, it's, it's pavement, yeah. The, the greener area you see here is a lawn area, and the darker green is the wooded area, yeah, on the, on the parcel. So that's the existing conditions. This is the, this is our proposal, you know? Essentially, we're keeping the existing entrance, we're narrowing it slightly to two twelve-foot lanes, fifteen-foot radius out of William Street. We've tightened up and introduced, uh, a consistent twenty-four-foot aisle through out to the back. Right now, there's no organization to the pavement that's out there. Now you just pull in and it's kind of a free-for-all. So, uh, to provide a twenty-foot aisle, twenty-four-foot aisle through parking on either side. The, the parking that we provide is, uh, forty-eight total spaces in both phases. You'll see thirty-two, here's the phase line, thirty-two from, in phase one. The, there are no changes, physical changes to the footprint of the building, but the doors here, we have, uh, the two, these will be the two main doors out front, would install a, um, concrete walkway to the accessible spots. We have provided two AEB accessible spots. The pavement that currently exists here will be removed. You can see the brown hatching here is a mulch and perennial planting that provided the interior landscaping in accordance with the regulations. The, uh, proposed catch basin and stormwater management area back here, which I can get into a little bit on the next sheet, which is the grading plan. Dumpster pad in the back, there is a proposed overhead door, um, at the lower level, it's fenced in dumpster in the, the, uh, delivery access and egress down below.
I have a couple of comments. These are actually my comments, uh, our engineers' comments. The, um, entryway, one of my things was a median strip, which you said you're gonna put, correct, twenty-four feet?
Uh, we, we didn't have an island, no. You don't propose an island, uh, you want an island in the middle?
Well, I, I think there should be something to divide the traffic, uh, egress and ingress, such as a, a four-foot. Maybe island, median strip per se, with signage that says keep right, so it's not a free-for-all down there. It's forty feet at the, at the road, is it twenty-four across, so, so your comments, eh?
The existing drive is twenty, at its narrowest, it's about twenty-eight. At the street, it's forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, in that range there. Two twelves, twenty-four. I mean, there, there could be some, some island placed in there, I don't, uh, I, that's, they're usually frowned upon, though, because it's, you know, for maintenance and someone coming in hitting that, I, if that's something that you, you'd like to see, it probably would fit, but I know islands are typically frowned upon on an entrance like that.
Yeah, it was, it was a thought I had, uh, you know, I'm just throwing it out there for consideration by the other members, too. If that's both ingress, I mean, entry and exit.
Yeah.
You know, for me, there should be a separation of someone going out or.
Be a son of a gun plow, too, with that island there, it'd be a problem.
Painted stripe I've seen in some places, is that something?
Yeah, they do, with the painted stripe of the line.
That would be.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Or, or, or concrete rumble strip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a narrow concrete rumble strip, gives that driver, you know, that, you know, I'm not supposed to be here, but it can be plowed and, you know.
Well, that sounds good.
That's actually.
That also gives like a larger.
Receptive to that, perhaps?
Yeah.
Okay.
The larger vehicle turn and then, so it can go right over.
The lines will be painted delineated such as, you know, traffic in, traffic out, bit.
Yeah, I would imagine as far as signage, people should know that they gotta keep right if that's.
Well, it depends on how much marijuana they use.
You know, that, that was a thought that I had, honestly.
It's not like alcohol. Could be a problem.
I'm gonna throw something else out there, how about a, a, as you exit, stop sign?
Yeah. We can put a stop, and then, um, we can stop. We can put a stop by there.
I mean, this is simple stuff, I just want, you know, for safety reasons and, you know, it's, um. I just want, you know, for safety reasons and, you know, it's, um, what was the other thing? Oh, parking spaces.
Yep.
Now, there's a comment by our engineer about the formula that was used for parking spaces. The one point four for employee. Did you have discussion with the building commissioner and he's gonna waive that?
Well, yeah, when I, in speaking with Jim, he thought that that was a reasonable assumption in this case. But I, I don't wanna speak to him, but we had.
Yeah, I wasn't able to confirm it tonight. I tried before I came, but I, I will get it confirmed and I'm sure if, you know, I'm taking your word for it. I don't see any issue. Okay.
I got a little issue with the parking. I, I think in the back of the building, there was sixteen cars that could be parked back there. But in that back, so much the back corner where you can't see. I would like to see that be employee-only parking. And in the state law, it states that the parking spots need to be visible to everyone. And you know, somebody could be hiding back there. And it's happened in other dispensaries where they have rob people's bags 'cause you come out with carrying a little bag. And as far as the shrubbery out front, I, I know it says in the state law how big the shrubs can be in signage. It can't be big enough for anyone to be able to hide behind. So you guys are familiar with those laws?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So the back portion of those sixteen lots, at least maybe the first ten till the left behind the building, you know, that you can't see as you're coming down the drive?
Yep.
Would be hid, would be in, would be hidden. So I would like to see those be employee-only.
For security purposes, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you have cameras? You're gonna install cameras around the building?
You have, you have to have a full.
Required by law too.
Has a full shade of them.
I read the law like about a year ago when it was first printed, like eighty-eight pages. You know, it's hard to comprehend it all, but I did pick up on some of that.
As a promoter of the property.
We good with that?
We're good with that, sure. I think it would work out well actually having employees on that.
Right now, no. The, the only.
Just for safety.
The only things located on the property, there's a stockade fence you'll see here. And then there's another very small segment of fence right here. Everything else is open and that was a, a point that we discussed early on. Some sites have required fencing, other sites, they, they haven't. In this case, in speaking with John, he doesn't believe they'd require a fence on a site like this.
They don't require it. A lot of companies like to put it in place because they go crazy with the security.
Right.
You know, some of these security jobs, you know, they, they're like Encore, it's like casinos really. And this could be a quarter of a million dollars when we get done with all the cameras.
Right.
So it's gonna be expensive.
I would, I would just add to the parking that, that concern that the, the initial estimates were between, of course, that between ten and twenty people. So we figured, early on, there's gonna be very few employees. We have enough up front in this phase one for both employees and the.
You won't have all the employees working at the same time, no? You'll have shifts.
Correct.
And then, and then once phase two with the larger part of the cultivation open, they have more employees. And then that, that was the intent back here is to keep the employees in the back and then free, free this whole area up for, for the customers.
Right, I was talking to the selectmen away in, and they have a dispensary there.
Yeah, which one?
The one downtown, I don't know.
Verle. Yeah, Ken Buckland or.
Ken Buckland is the.
He's the plan, planning. I've actually helped them out with organic aiming in town. So I've been dealing with way.
He, he said that we need to have at least thirty to forty parking spots.
Yeah.
And, uh, that would be, you know.
Yep, we will.
Yeah, we'll have that. They got it pretty good right now too in their, their area, right? There's not too much competition right now. Exactly. So, I mean, that's all gonna change, but we're, we're. The traffic impact is very.
They were inundated at first.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all. It's calmed down significantly.
Yeah.
Yes, it has. Because that was my next question, it's, but it's off-site. I know that you wanna have vehicles parked at, and use one hundred William Street. How many spaces are gonna be available there at that site? And how often is that shuttle gonna be going back and forth to drop people on your facility? Not doing that?
The plan is not to do that.
Okay.
It, it's available, okay? If I can sort of touch on that a little, I just, because I know, I say this because I've been to so many towns in Massachusetts where the issues come up. And I suspect everybody saw the news reports on television when, when all of this started. And there were two dispensaries east of the Mississippi.
Right.
There's twenty-two now. By the time this gets up in a year, the estimates are there'll probably be about a hundred in Massachusetts with five in Fall River, five in Taun, uh, actually, it's about ten in Fall River, five in Taunton, one or two in Swansea. I don't really see, and when we go through the numbers, at a peak, you might be seeing, I think, you know, ten cars at a time, at a peak time. So, you know, I, I really, I, I just, I, I say this to people just to sort of reiterate. I understand what you saw, but the experience that we've seen, my firm is involved with a lot of dispensaries in Colorado, Washington, nothing like that happens anymore. There's just enough of these places that it isn't a problem. So we're hopeful, we have this in our back pocket, you know, the other site if, if need be. But what is it, forty-eight spots that we have? Ultimately, when we, when we get to full capacity here, we believe there's gonna be more than enough.
I actually like the idea of the soft opening where the adult use have to call for appointments.
Yeah.
I mean, the first two weeks, so.
Yeah, plus, we're gonna park the employees off-site during those first two weeks as well and have police details and parking attendants as well.
Right, and that's the first two weeks. I, I read that. In the first two weeks, you're gonna have a soft opening, buy appointment only, and you're gonna have the Dyton Police Department. It's, you're gonna have a controlled flow of people coming. So then after that, according to your plan here, the Dyton Police Department's gonna be gone.
It's gonna be wide open.
But, but your very last sentence here, it says additionally, at the discretion of the town and the Dyton Police Department. So if it is busy and our police chief says, we need another guy there, or we need two guys there, then.
We've done, we've done this in a number of places.
It's not gonna be a problem, right?
No, we, we just did one in Amherst that opened not that long ago. And after two days, the police chief said, all right, you can, you can dispense with all this, it's not necessary anymore. But as long, to the extent that the police chief feels like, let's continue this.
We asked our police chief to come tonight and he didn't come. He just got back on vacation, but I wish, really wish he was here.
We're going to.
But once we grant the special permit, if, if we grant it tonight, it's out of our hands.
Right.
It's no longer the planning board's problem.
Right.
It becomes the problem of Dyton Police Department in the town of Dyton, not the planning board.
Right. I did meet with the chief back when we kinda first started, just to say, hey, I'm John, here we are. And his, his concerns, well, one of, one of the detectives' main concerns was, can he see the cameras inside? They don't wanna come in again. Well, like, absolutely. You know, we wanna be part of the community.
Right.
We, we wanna make this as easy for you as, as us.
Right.
So we're totally on board with what you're saying.
Right, okay.
The chief is the, the final say in all of it.
That, that land is part of the approval, so that it's, we, we are willing to abide by.
And I don't expect it to be overrun with that many people, but by chance it happens.
Yep.
That in the section of Route forty-four on William Street, that time.
Yep.
You know, so that's their problem, it's not our problem. But they may want a piece of the pie, you never know.
They can reach out to you, they know it's coming. They can reach out to you.
Yeah, I mean, we've done that to them.
Yep. We did, when you spoke with the, and I'm sorry, I have this person standing here, but when you spoke to the chief, did we take into consideration the auto auction on Tuesdays and, and then Thursday evening?
So.
So, yeah, I mean, I actually ran into this problem in Quincy, Mass. They had an auto auction and we talked to the mayor and we said, okay, why don't we dial back our hours? I mean, we're willing to work, we're here, you know?
Yeah, it just may come on issue.
I think it's fair to say that we were gonna, you know.
Maybe it makes sense to leave that in the discretion of the police chief as well.
Correct, yeah.
I, I think that's fine if you wanna add that as a condition.
They run those hours at the auto auction, I believe seven to seven on those two days, so.
I mean, a lot of times after the planning board approves something, people come back to us to complain, well, once we approve it.
No, that's fine. And if you wanna condition this on, on that issue, those particular times and days that you mentioned, that the police chief has some discretion to ask us to go back to our opening day plan.
Yeah.
We're fine with that.
I think most of us are looking for the ZBA honestly. Yes, not the next door.
Okay. So, was there anything on this page here?
Probably, yes, I just wanna add in, you know, in some of your thoughts. To me, I actually think we have a lot of.
Probably will need to have the detention basin area fenced in.
All correct, yeah.
Yeah, so it may make sense to connect, if you connect that fencing to the fencing around your dump, uh, dumpster pad area.
That's it?
Yeah, you basically have that black, that back corner blocked off where there's low visibility and there woods back there, so someone just can't sneak in the back.
I think it's a great idea.
And that would protect everybody at a low cost.
To extend this?
Yeah, uh, yeah, and then up around.
Up around the basin?
Yeah.
Close this end?
Yeah.
And then just extend that like that?
Yeah, connected, you know, provide a gate in there, you'd have a gate in there to get back there, but.
What if they just ran a fence right across that, that area?
That's basically what it's doing, but it's serving two, two purposes.
Two purposes, yeah.
Yeah. And I, since we were talking about, I, I don't quite understand what's gonna be happening. Where you have the abutting building to the north there?
This here?
Yeah, that's still just gonna be wide-open pavement.
Okay, is he being upstairs here tonight?
Down next door.
The other building, the old town.
Go upstairs.
No, sorry.
The other building.
Yeah, wait till the chairman comes back.
Sorry.
That's okay. So what is happening with traffic? I mean, cars could become an interest going out that way. What's that situation?
Then these would be blocked off somewhere. There's some businesses back there, I believe.
Uh-huh.
And they need to access. So we did speak to them and see how we would work it out. And we talked about maybe going on the other side of his, this has the house, he has all that property. We talked about maybe, you know, talking that. So that's something we wanna work with the neighbor. And as far as you're worried, your users, when they come in and they say, oh, I think of this shortcut or something like that, or.
Well, it's, so what you're suggesting, that they may.
It's just very unusual to have two properties, one's a business and I, I can see problems.
It's sort of for, for the benefit right now of the neighbor to be able to, to get out. But I saw it, it's, I almost would think it's sort of, let's ask the neighbor. If, if you don't want to be able to get out that way, we can fence it off. If you don't care that some people may start using it, you know, what would you prefer? You know, I, I, I think that's sort of a, an issue that we're just.
Yeah, that would be a big concern. How many businesses are back there is my question? It's tough to tell.
What are we talking about?
This area, yeah.
This area back.
Oh, back there, that's a, just a separate piece of property now.
Yeah, but it's, it's pavement.
Wide open.
Wide open, something, you know.
No fence?
No fence, nothing.
I just don't wanna, if, if they use this as a means of egress, I don't think we wanna get in the way of that.
Well, fine, we could, we could fence it off and leave a gate open or something like that for them.
Well, what's the concern? I mean, if they're not concerned, if the neighbor's not concerned, what other concern is there?
I don't know, is it wide open or the trees?
It's all, it's all open.
This is all paved. This, this building has doors that face this way here. This whole area is just kind of evolved together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can come in and out through there, that business?
I don't know where it through, yeah, I've been around. Essentially, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't like that.
I don't like that.
I, I would prefer to see that completely closed off.
Fenced off?
Yeah, because.
Any kind of fence, just to stop vehicular traffic.
In my opinion, that's a safety issue.
Absolutely.
People walking there or pulling in and another truck pulls out or whatever, I.
You can do an electronic key code right on the system of that fence and just anybody that, that works there, that has to have access back there would have a code just to get in and have it. Because you don't really wanna leave that open back there either. That's one of my concerns.
I probably should've took a ride over there. You know, I've never driven into that property.
I know that either.
I'd love to take a ride up there just to make sure myself, you know?
But if, if that's viewing it right now, that way, I, my vote is to actually seal that off completely. I, I don't like the idea of other businesses coming in through there from a safety standpoint.
Right, no, this type of business.
How much traffic goes in? I mean, every other day, I don't know how much traffic goes in and out.
Well, we don't know. I mean, today it's one thing, tomorrow it'd be another.
I don't think we necessarily have a problem with that. I'm just not sure what.
I'm getting that feeling, yeah.
Rights the neighbor might assert. And that would be the concern is not to sort of.
Are there any access easements or be adverse possession or?
Not sure.
There's not, nothing that I saw at the registry or on plan to record.
What type of businesses there, what type?
I can figure it out. Seems like an auto body, mechanics.
Mechanics over there, yeah.
Oh, I, I, if, you keep adding more to it. I'm sticking to my guns more, more. That's a, that's.
Sorry to add a sour note, but I.
I definitely.
Real question about that.
I have spoken to the neighbor, he's willing to work with us, you know, obviously, what's in it for him.
But have you spoken to the neighbor in regards to sealing that off?
His concern is sealing that off. What, what happens to his property? The, the owner of two hundred actually owned that property at one point and sold it to the gentleman who owns it now. I believe he's actually the bank on it too. So he has some say in the whole thing.
Would you be willing to put a fence?
I think we're, you know, me and the, the two owners could definitely sit down and work it out.
I, I don't think, I don't think there's unwillingness.
It don't have to be a wall, you know, just a fence.
No, it's just, but I don't think.
To stop vehicular traffic and people.
I brought up to the owner, I said, maybe we can come on the other side of your house, you know, get all these. There's two different entities. It'd be, it'd probably be better for you and for us if we could, you know, obviously, we'd be the one putting the road in and helping get around it. So he, he was, you know, he didn't say no, he didn't say yes.
And on top of that, that will give you quite a bit more tra, parking space there as well. Continue that grass strip there up against the fence. And you have all the fencing, all the, um, parking area. I, I, personally, that's my vote right now. And I think it's gonna take a lot for me to change my mind on that part, but I'm only one, so.
We're, uh, we're gonna go up and talk to the abutters regarding fencing.
Yeah.
Within the next day or two.
Okay.
And.
Well, it's, I would suggest you leave it up to the applicant because he's gonna have to make.
Well, he just stated that they.
So they're, I, I, you said you were.
Yeah, one of us.
Okay, now.
One of them.
One of them.
What if that owner doesn't wanna put up a fence?
I have.
Is that a concern to you guys?
To me it is, to me it is. I, I, I just always.
To me, I mean, it could definitely become a liability issue if someone's.
No, but, I mean, look, if, if the owner is.
Depends on your property.
If the owner is completely against the concept, I'm not, you know, would there be any value to putting signage up that, to make it clear that it's not an exit from this property?
Like, do not enter.
Do not enter.
Or so on.
I don't think I'd bother myself and just have a walk, but.
Are you guys pressed for us to approve this tonight?
When's the next B-day?
Next.
Right, 'cause I wouldn't mind doing a site visit now.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe it's.
But I don't wanna hold you up.
Yeah.
But at the same point.
Well, we don't wanna force you into making a decision without a little bit more information either. Well, we don't wanna force you into making a decision without a little bit more information either, so I think maybe that's what makes sense.
Yeah, and I'd love to have our police chief.
Like the police chief.
Too, I mean, we're, we're pretty much in favor of all of it.
Yeah, we get it.
But we wanna make, we wanna get it right.
No, that's fine.
And you can start drafting a decision.
When's the next meeting here?
The twenty first?
August twenty.
August twenty first.
I'm not here.
I'm here.
You, that, that's gonna be all right with you, you think?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, then let's let the engineer finish.
Well, that, that was the site layout anyway, um, this is, this is a grading, uh, a grading plan. We're proposing to retain the pavement to the extent we can. Some modifications are gonna have to be made to ensure that this is accessible upfront, A E B requirements, but.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to make some repairs, the, the pavement's definitely gonna need some repairs.
Especially in the back.
Yeah, though, we're gonna have to even that off anyway, um, so, yeah, there's gonna be, there's gonna be areas that they're gonna pave. The, the crux of the, this is site grading utilities. The exist, the existing water isn't placed, um, electric. The, uh, there is no gas to the site they propose to use. I think you're gonna use propane, but.
Well, we're, we're looking into that, we're vetting our engineers right now, so, the gas is three hundred, thirty-five hundred feet away, or two hundred thousand, the gas line down. I crushed the line.
How many feet is it away?
It's about three, thirty-five hundred feet to the nearest gas line.
Wow.
Same with the sewer, so there's some challenges there, but we've, we've run across it before, there's other, there's ways to get around.
So, so for sewer, um, it's gonna need new septic, we've already spoken to Goddard or Board Health, we're gonna work with him to get a, a new septic down in this corner and do the test fix for that. Drainage wise, right now, um, you know, our, our goal was to improve the project, uh, the site, you know, to the extent we could. Right now, it's primarily impervious. We tried to, to decrease the impervious where we could, and then in addition, um, right now, the roof leaders dump out onto the pavement, which is, contributes to its condition. Um, there are a handful of them that do go underground. There's, there's rumor that there's a drain pipe out there, but I can't find any evidence of that, so. I proposed a, a new roof leader system to catch that, to prevent that from, from running over the surface, picking up contaminants, and then all the water ends up into the wooded area as it is now, um, so, the drain line, we picked that roof, um, roof runoff up while it's still clean. Hiked that directly back there, let it discharge back there, and, um, per D E P requirements, um, this is a paved surface, this is gonna pick up the contaminants. We provided, um, a deep some catch basin, a four bay, and attenuation prior to a discharge, so, um, that was a comment. Uh, that, that, did you want like a two, ten, hundred, tree and post? Okay, um, we'll provide that, but it was, I believe it was roughly a fifty percent reduction in the hundred. So, uh, but I'll provide all of that for you, uh, in the proposed septic there.
Then you have to get a separate stormwater permit.
What's that?
You have to get a separate stormwater permit.
From?
Uh, Board of Health.
Well, they have their own permit requirement?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's, um, unique.
That is unique.
I was just gonna comment, say that, we're a very unique community.
That is, well, I've never seen that, but we shall do it. Um, this is a landscaping and lighting plan. Again, we, you can see the round areas here, the hatch areas, trees, shrubs, and the perennial plantings. The lighting, we've selected, um, LEDs, uh, really casting down onto the ground to keep the, what candles on property. Um, there's an existing, this is all wooded on this side and will remain, we're not touching anything along this property line. This area here is being cleared as part of the, um, the improvements, the septic, as well as the stormwater. That area will be all home, seed restored. This area here is, is going to remain lawn, um, stockade with the stockade fence. There was mention of, um, plantings for screening, we, um, we thought the stockade, if you look at it, we're, we're very low here with that fence, these people can't really see down onto the site, but, again, when you do your site visit, you'll see how that, the intent of the screening is to prevent the neighbors from seeing, so is the fence enough, or should it be supplemented with something? That was a comment that was made, so.
It's under zoning, the landscape is screening requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe a berm and fence, I could be different with a berm, you know, two or three foot berm and then, you know.
Well, it also addressed the part where we had full pavement between the two properties.
So that's the lighting and landscaping, um, I, as far as, um, addressing the comments to the, to the letter, is that something, did you want it to discuss point by point, or is that something?
No, tonight, we can, you can do it over the phone and get together. I will point out anything that's, you know, critical.
No, I, I, uh.
I think we hit the big ones.
Yeah, I, I was, um, I didn't see anything in that letter that couldn't be addressed, so. Certainly, if any other questions that you might have, I'll try to answer.
I have a couple of the board, wanna, let me talk for a few seconds?
Sure.
Okay, I, uh, what about, uh, any loading areas?
The, the primary loading area is still, correct me, John, per plan, per, per floor plan is gonna be out back in the lower level. There's gonna be a proposed overhead dock here. There was the intent also to retain this, at least in phase one, where this isn't gonna be available, so they could, um, they could do their deliveries on the ramp. And then, long term, I think this is gonna go away, in that they'll be exclusively done below where it's fenced in.
I, I did have one question. In the text, it says the, uh, that the exterior renovations will be limited, but the architecture will show a drastically different building. What is, what are we doing out there?
So, the exterior improvements is, it's got a new roof, so we're not doing that. We will be, it's limited to just closing in the footprint, we won't change. We're gonna have an in and out door, so we're gonna change that in front. All the side, all the, you know, has a bunch of overhead doors, those will be filled in. It's a panel building, American Mark's started there. They're pretty big players in the business now. It's kinda funny how we found this building, this panelized, it's perfectly set up, so. Uh, significant, exterior changes is really, I mean, I don't consider that, we're not.
But it's gonna look nicer like you show in the architect.
Uh, as.
Prettyed up, I guess, prettyed up.
We, we would, we'd be definitely willing to pretty up the front side, um, would you be looking for a shingling in the whole place?
No, no, I'm just saying.
You gotta paint it.
We, we, the text said no changes, no minimal changes, and then you're, you know, right, and, you know, the elevations and everything show this nice, almost new building.
Yeah, well, right, so when the doors gets closed in, and I guess we would look at painting the, the vinyl or the aluminum, which is the side. So, and it, you know, the trim would be colored, I mean, that's what we're gonna.
That expectation will be met.
So, stanchion, I, I think of knocking wall down and bumping.
Okay, just a matter of terms.
You know?
Sounds a very good one, Peter, because I noticed that too, it's not a very good looking building.
Oh, yeah, the sheriff's office on Rhine looks like it was done by the Three Stooges, I mean, all that's gonna get knocked down, I, I think the water line's PVC. I mean, I've kinda been through the building quite a bit and.
I've only seen a couple of dispensaries in the state, but the ones that I have seen look very nice. They're appealing.
Yeah, right, I have too.
Yeah, I saw one in Boston, N E A or something like that, they get a little refined down.
They got lucky, they went in Brookline.
That was a really.
Okay, so, I mean, we don't have, you know, it's, you can put lipstick on a pig, right? So we do plan on, we want it to be comfortable. We wanna pull up, we're, we're not gonna have old shutters, I mean, it's gonna be.
One of them is an old building, and they, they fixed it up really, really nice.
Yeah.
And Fall River's in like a complex type of.
I just wanna comment on, um, number eleven, on, um, our engineer's comments. Says the traffic engineer should provide information on the traffic impact at a level of service expected at the adjacent intersection due to the proposed project. As I said before, Route forty-four at certain times of the day in Williams Street can be very tough to get in and out of. How long is, is it going to take for you to complete your traffic study and be able to come back to us with that impact information?
I, I think we can, speaking, I think we can get that by that next date that you're talking about. Um, I'll verify if I'm wrong about that, we'll let you know, and maybe we have to move that date, but we should be able to get that. The, the question that I was told to ask is, where do you want that, do you want that for the, the, I guess, it's Williams Street forty-four? Or do you want it down at Tremont and Williams?
Tremont's a, a traveled town road, I would say, and, um, it is, of course, you know, you either go right through, hit forty-four, you go left to head out to the Swansea area, that type of thing.
So is it the forty-four intersection?
Actually, the forty-four intersection.
That's Tonklin's.
But it's a ton, that's the city of Tonklin also, I wanna state that. So my question is, is that, um, and this goes to your security part of that, is that in the beginning, I know it's not, not town, you're not perfect, but you're gonna be in contact with the Tonklin. To have someone at that intersection, because it could be a disaster. Seven or six thirty to, to eight thirty to nine, you can't get across. Two thirty to four forty-five, twelve o'clock at night, forget it, you can't get across. You can't turn left, you can't, you can turn right to head to a tonklin, but forget it to take a left out of you, you're not getting out, so.
My question is, what is that traffic study on the team for us to make this decision for the, you, the helping?
I think it's just gonna give us a more of an idea of, um, what the potential impact of how many cars are gonna be, you know, traveling down Williams Street.
I think they basically count the cars.
No, I, no, I understand that, but let's just say that it, it, it creates ten or twelve more cars per hour or whatever. What is that gonna do for us as a board?
That's, that's why I'm asking to give us an, an idea of the level of service, which, which talks about how long, the, the impact on the delay of drivers there. And if there is a significant change in the level of service, then you may ask the traffic engineer to give you some potential meth, uh, means for mitigation.
Okay, so we'll get a level of service analysis for that intersection?
There was an impact statement.
Yeah, you know, this, this isn't like going to a restaurant where they have, you're turning tables over, they're only getting turned over every hour, this is the business where you're gonna be in. Basically, you do business fifteen, twenty minutes, you're out the door, you're in the vehicle, you're leaving, you know?
Yeah.
That's like.
I don't think the traffic will be that heavy after a couple of weeks. We have the American Auto Auction right across the way, there's days there that they, that they just don't back there, so, it's another three.
That may work in your favor.
Who would do your.
Yeah, it's Michael Harris and one.
Who would do the traffic survey for you?
Uh, Hayes?
Hayes Engineering.
Okay.
They did submit a preliminary traffic.
Yes, okay, I saw that, reading that.
I had another que, what about signage? So, any signage on the street?
Signage, you've got a sign, I think, at least on a picture.
Posting one, stand alone, but that's totally up to you guys. You want a small little sign on the building?
The, the, at least the, um.
Do you guys have a symbol?
Yeah, yeah, uh, do we have that available?
I, I don't.
It's an architect.
Because they have that at the, at the Brookline dispensary, they have the symbol on the.
That's all that's gonna be in the sign.
It's pretty strict, state regulations. No leaves, no neon.
We don't have a sign, no, but the, um, the architect had, I'll, I'll show everyone.
Yeah, I, I asked for the sign, and it wasn't in the plan.
Yeah, no, the, the sign isn't shown.
Okay, very first on the law.
It appears. Building around, but, uh, it, the ground, it did show up in the.
Appears sometimes to be very deceiving.
In the architectural.
Conceptual email.
On this area here.
But what do you guys want? It should be on the plan.
I would prefer it to be on the street, so people going by don't whip by, you know, typically it's.
Oh, yeah.
Running auxiliary.
I think there's some size regulations too, state size regulations on the side.
That's all in the zoning.
I don't think it can be.
I think the state has their own regs on the size of the sign.
No, I don't think there's a, on the size, but it's.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I don't think the sign should be, and, and it's a state rig somewhere, um, big enough to where someone can hide behind it.
Well, clearly, if it was a security issue.
It was written to the law.
It, it's not necessary, that, you know, this is.
You know, I'm not making this stuff up, I read it somewhere.
I hear ya. What's, what's interesting about this industry is it's sort of the, the advertising in this new age. It's not like, you know, when I grew up, where, you know, you wanted to have this enormous sign. All the advertising is done online on these sites like Leafly and Weedmaw. People know where these things are, they know how to, it's really just for wayfinding, you don't need to have a big, you know.
I'd just hate to see you have a sign made and then somebody say, well, the state rig says it can't be that big.
Yeah, no, it, it won't be. So we'll put some, we'll put, uh, on the, on the plan, uh, probably some detail.
Yeah, zoning bylaws, section thirty-three, forty-two talks about freestanding signs.
Okay.
Yeah. I asked because if you didn't have the sign, you went to put it in, we said, well, you're gonna come back and ask for it.
Right, yeah, we'll put it, we'll, we'll, we'll put it there.
I'll show the physical location on the site plan, and I'll try to get the, um, from the architect, the actual, um, detail of the sign, and I'll include that, so.
It's a big sign.
Okay.
Cannot exceed five percent of the front wall of the building or forty square feet.
Okay, yeah, no, we don't want something.
It won't be anything.
All right, wanna talk about hours?
So I think I mentioned earlier, we were looking, what, to sort of, for the maximum that's available right now, even though I don't think ultimately that's what we use. And I think what that was, was eight AM to nine PM, which is available, but, as I said, I suspect, I don't see a lot of these places opening, mostly ten o'clock is when most of them open. And I'm mostly closing, I suspect is what we end up at, it's just easier for staffing and such. But if we could sort of preserve the right, uh, we may find out that, you know, Friday morning at eight o'clock is a very popular time, so. Um, I would sort of reserve the maximum, but anticipate there'll be some shortening of hours.
Six days a week, Monday through Saturday.
Seven.
Seven.
I'm just an article in the paper, July third was a big day for all the dispensaries, they, they, they set a record.
Sure.
Yeah, so prior to holidays, people like to stock up.
You're right, you're right.
The only, the only thing I would allow reduction in maybe is in the adult use, uh, the medical portion, you know, if somebody needs.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna allow enough hours, I.
Even with the adult use, I was thinking like eight to eight.
Yeah, I mean, I suspect that that's prob, it, it could work out to be like, like I said, I suspect they start at the max, but in the end, you, you know, you don't wanna be sat down in a place that doesn't have anybody coming in.
A lot of the patients that I do talk to and over the, that actually are happy about the adult use, because there's a lot of C V L licenses, there's a lot of firearm people that don't want Big Brother going, and there's a lot of scare about that. So when you say medical and adult, there's a lot of people going in for the adult use and actually using it, you know, for, as a patient.
Oh, yeah, I get you.
Just to keep in mind, you know, you know.
There's some question as to whether the medical program is gonna survive, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Just because people may not want.
Yeah, you know, when we, when we make a decision, we could maybe come up with, we'll allow.
You get a big tax break on the medical end.
That is, that is the advantage.
That, that's a big part of it right now.
Yeah, we could adjust, you know, we'll go from eight to nine in the beginning, and we could adjust within a thirty day period or something.
That'd be great, yeah.
Now, my, my last question for me, anyway, um, is there any chance all these items could be addressed with Peter? Like within the next two weeks, so we could get his peer review?
I think so, traffic study might be a little.
I think it's the traffic, this is the only thing.
That's the only issue I think we have.
Yeah, and I'll get back, you know.
You guys are rich, Charles, all these, what do you want to say?
I didn't know, I, do you have an additional question? Yeah, I, I didn't say anything, and I, it's okay, we'll do, I give you a call, and I go through these to make sure I'm providing the right info.
Sure.
And then, um.
No, I don't know which properties there are. Are you disturbing more than thirty-five thousand square feet?
I, I. So, a new, a new ground or a ground?
Are we talking about bill for control? Is there any grading or construction or, you're not doing anything with the parking lot?
Well, we're, we're taking out some pavement here. I could calculate that, we could be doing a septic out in the back and then the stormwater.
Yeah, well, that's okay, but I'm just giving you a heads up because you're not the top of the tonklin. If you're dis, if you're disturbing more than thirty-five thousand square feet, that'll be what'll, uh, kick out the stormwater.
I'm surprised we didn't have a letter from him.
Excuse me?
Could we get a comment letter from Tom?
Tom.
From Todd.
Todd.
Todd, Billy?
Todd.
No, I have not heard from him. I know he's been reviewing or looking at some of the stuff, but I haven't heard from him.
He may wanna check with him.
I'll give, I'll give him a list.
Yeah, to calculate if there's more than thirty-five thousand square feet of disturbance, and that'll be what.
Is that what triggers the stormwater?
That triggers the stormwater, yeah.
Going anything under that? It, it, you're saying it's not required?
Yeah, but it's only like five hundred, so.
Is that online, the, the permit requirements, do you, I didn't see that online.
It should be. If not, you can, you can get it next time.
I'll, I'll give him, I'll touch base.
That office is over, way tall.
Yeah, down below, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
Last thing that I would go over and, uh, because I go over it all the time, but quite frankly, it sounds like you're sort of well versed in some of this stuff, so I'll try to abbreviate it. Just the security measures that go on at the site. So, you're probably familiar, this is a. this is a limited access facility, everybody likes to think of these places as pharmacies and liquor stores, except you can't walk, you can walk right into a pharmacy and a liquor store, you can't do that here, you've gotta show ID before you even set foot in this door, you go in through a Sallyport, you know, door closes behind you, there's a door in front of you, you're showing the ID a second time there, and in fact, you're gonna show that ID a third time at the point of sale as well, so, once you get into the facility, everything is sort of accessed on a need basis, so, you know, if somebody is in charge of trimming the plants, they're not gonna be able to get into the vault, it's usually key card access, or sometimes keys, but they're not gonna have that access, it's only where you need to be, customers and patients can't get into the back areas of the facility, it's very limited. Additionally, you've got cameras all over this facility perimeter, you've got a 360-degree view around the perimeter, you've got inside every place, every room where marijuana is handled or stored, all of the windows and all of the doors as well have cameras on them, all of the inventory is subject to what's called a CD sale tracking system, so, from the moment that plant comes up, it gets barcoded, tagged, goes into an inventory system, so if that plant that weighed two ounces last week suddenly only weighs one ounce this week, you're gonna be notified, and you're gonna go back to the footage from those cameras, which we're required to keep, it's 90 days, and you're gonna find out who's responsible for the diversion, and when you find that out, they're terminated, it's a no-tolerance policy, and these dispensaries would respect to that, companies spend way too much money putting these facilities together to tolerate that kind of thing and lose a license, so take it very seriously, it's one of the things that my firm does a lot of, we go and we sneak inspect our clients, just to make sure they're sort of following all of these protocols and doing it the right way, so, that's something that, you know, this facility will be subject to as well. The alarm system, there's a primary system, there's a backup system, just in case the primary's compromised, panic alarms, duress alarms, all over the facility as well, we, we generally, you know, when we put this together, we like to sit down with the police chief, and sort of walk through it, get any input from the police chief as well, and if they wanna have access, in certain circumstances, they like to have access to the footage, so if there's some kind of an emergency, they can see what's going on inside, and we're happy to provide that as well, obviously. There is a secure vault in the facility, so that, at the end of the day, for example, the dispensary, all of your product goes into the vault, at the end of the day, comes back out at the beginning of the next day, it's not Fort Knox, but the idea is that this is sort of a layered security, it's by the time somebody, you know, tries to come at night, you've got 24/7 monitoring of this facility, you've got during business hours, actual security personnel on site, if somebody gets in, your cameras are gonna see them, they're gonna have to get through several doors, and that vault, it's not impenetrable, but it takes a little while to get through, and by the time all of this happens, your local authorities are well on the way, so, this, you know, the, the good news about all of this is that Massachusetts hasn't had a security issue, we haven't had robberies, Brookline helped catch a burglar in the neighborhood.
I saw that, one of those.
So, it's not an attractive, you know, facility for somebody who has bad intent in terms of trying to steal product, there's just too much security, so we hope that continues, obviously, and of course, all of the personnel here are background checked, that's a state requirement, so, you know, I, I would feel fairly comfortable telling you this, these facilities are really among the most secure facilities in the state, much more so than a bank or a pharmacy or any of those other types of things, so, hopefully, there's some comfort with that. Beyond that, is there anything else we can tell you?
I just, go ahead, Joe.
I have a question, in regards to the back of the building there, has the fire chief seen these plans, has he reviewed for trucks and things like that?
I had sent him a, a early draft, which is essentially, the only thing that changed on this plan, from the draft that I sent him, is that I shifted a couple of, I shifted a couple of these spaces up here, which were over in here, out to the back, but that's what he reviewed, but I had asked him basically, just, just to do a preliminary review, it was informal, and he said at the time, he didn't have any, he didn't have any concerns that he was gonna forward a note to the planning board to that effect, but typically, you know, once the submission goes in, we give the 12, I think, original copies, that is usually distributed for an official comment, I, I tried calling him to see if he had a chance to review it, if he had any questions, and I haven't heard back, but...
We'll make sure that we get comments from everyone, that we should have comments from, like the police chief, fire chief, board of health, so forth, so on.
Sure, when I build these places, what I do is I invite them, every, everyone on the fire department, if there's a problem, you wanna know the building, too, so, right from the day one, we like to bring them in, we wanna show them that we're doing the job correctly, you know, we want everybody wants, you know, buzz your town, because we don't wanna bring residents in, you know, there's things to that, but we're totally an open book when it comes to the fire department, police system, that's what it is, you know, we're here to make sure you know that.
I see all your engineering is gonna be on the exterior, as in, you know, HVAC, that type of thing.
I'm sorry, my hairines went through the wash, I...
Are you gonna have any backup generator system on this property?
Yeah, so that, basically, the code, the cameras, the IT room has to be backed up, or you actually have to have two different companies watching it, so a lot, most of the people who back up the IT room, now, that can be as simple as having a, you know, a UPS that'll kick on for 20 seconds, that'll allow you to have a little household generator, that actually passes code, well, we like to take it a little step further, where you have a, a bigger generator, you know, that, that does other things, now, that, that's security button, right, if you get into different parts, there's all different kinds of ways of processing cannabis, if you get into the hydrocarbon, it's just blowing out, we're not doing that, we're saying, nice CO2, very safe, it doesn't, you know, like, if you went to the, the hydrocarbon, all the backup fans, life safety, all that stuff, it blows it up into a whole different landscape, we're not proposing that, we're proposing staying with CO2, I guess, I could speak to about, a little about when we talk about phasing, how, how it go.
We had a gentleman, I just happened to be downstairs talking to our administrative assistant, and this gentleman lives in town, and he is a scientist, and he asked me, because he lives in St. Paul, Florida, where they have some grow facilities that basically owns a buddy's property, he was asking about odor retention was his main issue, so, that'll be all in-house, HEV filters, that type of thing.
Yeah, that would all be, yeah. HEV filters, really clean, it, it's charcoal filters.
Yeah.
There's, there's all different levels, charcoal filters, to be honest here, is what everyone's pitching out to all the towns, they don't work that good, and they get clogged and it costs you a ton of money, there's a very expensive things right now, so, the engineering company we're working with is on the cutting edge, they are actually hired by the CCC to develop these things, and these are the people I've been working with, and these are people that I, I have a estimate, we're, we're at the point, we've had a, we've hired the architect to get through this, now it's time to get the MEP people on board, so if I have my way, we'll be using the company I'm talking about, and they're actually being contracted by CCC, so I'm barely reversed, it's thermal oxidizers, it's the same technology that gets on a jet, because BLS for the, everyone's getting in the game, EPA wants to 20% of the take, so now they're being on the job, what has to happen in these places, and they're gonna, they're not gonna grandfather anyone, so we wanna do it right the first time, and that gets another part of the phase, where we're, we're keeping it simple, stupid, stupid, so what?
Why don't you talk to the, the, the phasing, something?
The phasing, so, yeah, there's two reasons we're phasing it, I mean, the capital needed to build these places are extreme, I mean, they're just, some, some of these places $400 square foot, it hasn't really quit, second would be quick to market, we know we gotta get in the game, we feel like, once we get in the game, we're gonna be a, a good player, because we have great people on our team, and we know what we're doing, so phasing is all about capital, we wanna get open quicker, we, if we're able to do the dispensary, get the address over, have one grow room, have one small lab, kitchen, all that, delivery products, and then wholesale, we know we're gonna be in the wholesale market, which is not scary to us, because we have been in the business for, you know, a long time now, we have a lot of connections, we know the pulse, so that's the main reason we like the face. You know, now, phasing, that's, that is not to say we're gonna build the front and figure out everything, when you phase a project, you don't wanna step on your feet, you design the whole building, right, so, there's still $100,000 in engineering, we, we'll, we'll go through, we'll design the whole building, we'll show you what we're gonna end up building, but then we're gonna dial it back, because honestly, I don't know what's on the street, I know it's three phases, but what's there, you know, all these things come into play, there's a lot of assumptions right now, until the MEP peoples get on board, you know, they're the ones that are major players in designing equipment, the equipment to go into these grow rooms are not your typical rooftop units, they don't keep up, it's not tomatoes, you have one plant, you feed a half a gallon of water, 95% of the water goes into the room, so, everyone thinks it's light and the heat, it's really drying out the room, and if you don't dry it out, you're...
Uptighty controls.
Uptighty control, and everyone's RH, R S, but it's really the due point that you look at, and it's a lot of specialized stuff, some of this equipment could be 14 weeks away, because everyone's trying to get their hands on, and so, that's why, like, if this project, if it wasn't, you know, cannabis and all the stuff, the CC, you know, it's a four-month project, but really, we're looking at the, at the second quarter to 2020, the reality, going through all this stuff, it's, it's nice to know that in the beginning, I mean, I've been, I don't like being in projects that come in and clean a few up, where everyone, the owner gets someone on board that just keeps you up on the depth, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna tell you we're gonna be open, and that, we're gonna do it right, and we're gonna do it the first time, right.
I have another question in regards to the, the loading dock there, you do use big trucks, or?
Big trucks, no, they usually got Sprinter vans. You know, when we, or, like, when it was full operational, and you, depending on the medium Rob wants to use, there could be an 18-wheeler come up, or, it's really a cocoa, it's a, you know, skin of a coconut, most, and a lot of people going to, you know, Rockwell, so, you know, they come in big pallets, so there, there's gonna be big trucks, but not every day, like, if we were gonna transport, it's a small van that you don't, you know, two people have to be in the van, you can talk about that a lot.
Yeah, it's, there are transportation protocols, but, you know, in terms of when you're, if you're selling wholesale to somebody, that's, that's in a nondescript van, no markings on it, have to have two agents in the vehicle at all times, you have to have multiple communication devices, GPS tracking, it's, it's pretty strict protocols, but, yeah, I mean, I rarely have seen trucks, at these, the large trucks at these things, I mean, it's, you know, if you, if you need to deliver soil, but beyond that, there'd just be no need for it, it's very, it's not very often, as far as I understand, so, I don't think you're gonna see that sort of thing.
If there was a fire, would the truck be able to get in and out of there, fire truck?
Yeah, nothing's really changing, I mean, they've been doing it.
Yeah, I, the, the only, the only area, we moved the pavement up in here, other than that, existing pavement is what it is, and I, I believe that's, that's why there were no immediate concerns anywhere from the fire department, I'm, I'm certainly curious to see, you know, it's a final review, as you better know.
Everything looks pretty straightforward, I don't think there's not too many things we can, you know, square away, so, it's, you just wanna be careful that we get everything, you know, right?
No, I think that's great, so we'll, we'll try to, I have a list of the things that you wanna address, the, I think the traffic, the traffic issue, the level of service analysis is gonna be the one that takes the most time, but I think we've sort of worked that out with him, and I think he knows the timing.
I guess we'll leave that up to you, whether you wanna reach out to Totten or not, with the corner of Bridge, Bridge Street and, what do you want, actually, that's how Williams Street did it at Bridge Street.
I've, I've worked with the chief.
I'd wait till after your traffic study, I wouldn't need that.
Yeah.
I am meeting the law company tomorrow morning on site, 9:00, everyone's welcome, come check it out.
9:00?
9:00.
Where you gonna be?
200 Williams.
Okay.
And the other thing was the, the neighbor.
I'm sorry?
The other thing that seems a little bit up in the air is the neighbor.
Yeah.
Yes, the fence, the access, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
That, he needs to be reached out to ASAP, that type of thing, so...
You plan on hiring any local people?
Absolutely, that's in our host group.
It's in your host, oh, good.
I just wanna make sure that...
What are you looking for at your job?
No, I'm not.
He's angling, he's angling.
It is a very long process.
What do you wanna go tomorrow morning?
Yeah, I think I can go.
You guys wanna go, the two of you?
I could, it's up to you, I don't have anything going on until, any afternoon.
I'll be there, I, I have American law coming, so, you know, so, we'll see, we'll have a little time, I wanna, I wanna show him the building, so he can get his head around it, and we go into architectural review, which is, and he's, they've been in a ton of these places, so it's a good chance to ask questions, you know, on that side, get a look at the issue with the neighbor.
Great. It's just not solar, then you'd have a problem over here.
I'm not making it solo.
You don't like solar, I don't like the sun.
I approved the last one, though.
Yeah, it's just not worth it, I mean, I agree with you.
The person in the audience, do they have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask if we have any public input at this time?
I was here for the, for Peter Parker.
Okay.
I'm sure.
You have any questions for us?
Actually?
No, you've been pretty straightforward, so...
Okay.